Good evening. Linda, could you give the invocation?
Everyone bow your heads, please. Holy and righteous Father, we thank you for your love, mercy, and grace. We thank you that in this difficult time, we can keep our eyes focused on you and your promise to never fail us nor forsake us, never to leave us comfortless. These are days of uncertainty when many are without jobs, school, food, and many other things, and many are ill. Father, we thank you that your word says that you will supply all of our need according to your riches and glory, that you are our healer, and that this too shall pass. Lord, as we come through and out of this pause in our normal lives, let us see those things that are truly important: family, friends, love, helping one another, and most of all, our faith in you. As this council makes decisions to bring us out of where we are at, give them wisdom to bring all things out of alignment into alignment and creative ways to enhance and improve our economy and our community as they look to you for strategies and answers. Bless all who are caring for others in any way, shape, or form at this time and keep them safe. Father, we pray that the closeness in families, love for those around us, and caring will not end as this COVID situation ceases. We release the power of the blood of Jesus against any advancement of this virus and command it to cease. We pray your protection over all of our citizens and ask for your peace to surround them. Your word says, "My peace I give unto you, not as the world gives; give I unto you." Let not your heart be troubled, neither let it be afraid. Father, we receive your peace and spread your peace over this city and over this county tonight in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Linda. Now we'll officially call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Present in person, Mayor Miller.
Here.
Alderpersons, Ross.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
And Mysick.
Here.
Alderpersons present via teleconference, Bornhamon.
Here.
McLanathan.
Here.
Busker.
Here.
Brashaw.
Here.
And Berberay.
Here.
Staff who are present in person, Director Bukas.
Present.
Chief Summers.
Present.
Director Sutman.
Present.
Clerk Anderson is present. And Attorney Zito.
Present.
Do we have any staff present via teleconference? Director Carr. Absent, Kopansky. Are you expecting them to be on there?
They should be on.
Janson. Is absent. Hines.
I'm here.
Zupkov.
Here.
Huffhines.
Here.
Richter.
Here.
One more time for Director Carr. Kopansky. And Janson. The last three will be marked absent. Yes.
Okay, if you could please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance led by Alderman Ross.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one is the approval of the agenda. However, we are removing item number five and moving that to the first meeting in June as well as the executive session. So Madam Clerk, oh, wait a minute, let's have a motion first.
So moved.
Madam Mayor, make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion made by Alderman Brashaw, seconded by Alderman Parker. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll on the approval of the agenda?
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Mysick.
Aye.
Berberay.
Aye.
Bornhamon.
Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Item number two is the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting on April 20th, 2020. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved. Seconding.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Mysick, seconded by Alderman Ross. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Mysick.
Aye.
Berberay.
Aye.
Bornhamon.
Aye.
And McLanathan.
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Item number three is public comments, which we have none. Item number four is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is considered to be routine in nature and passed as one motion unless there's a member of the council that would like to have something removed for further discussion. Is there anything, counsel? The consent agenda consists of approving and placing on file the City Manager's Recruitment Committee minutes from April 6, 2020, the Foreign Fire Insurance Board minutes from February 13, 2020, the Director of Public Works Dennis Carr Employment Extension, the Greater Freeport Partnership's monthly report dated April 26, and the Greater Freeport Partnership's quarterly report for the first quarter of 2020. Also is the Police Department report for January, February, and March, and the Fire Department report for March 2020. Bank account closures and consolidations memo from the interim Director Richter, and permit fee waiver for FHN's Crisis Stabilization Unit memo from the Director Zupkov. Also is the approval of the finance bills in the total of $865,132.03 and the payroll for pay period ending April 22, 2020 in the total of $567,114.27. Is there a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
First made by Alderman Parker.
Seconding.
Seconded by Alderman Ross. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Mysick.
Aye.
Berberay.
Aye.
Bornhamon.
Aye.
And McLanathan.
Aye.
The consent agenda is approved eight to zero.
And item number five, we've removed item number six. There are three proclamations, one for Mental Health Awareness Month, one for ABATE, and one for National Day of Prayer. It's a little lengthy, counsel, so I apologize, but yet nonetheless, it's important for each one of these proclamations, so I will take the moment to read them. The first one being, "May is Mental Health Awareness Month, having been observed as such since 1945. And whereas Mental Health Awareness Month is an opportunity to increase public understanding of the importance of mental health and to promote the identification and the treatment of mental illness. And whereas mental health problems do not discriminate, they know no age, no race, no creed, no economic status. And whereas greater public awareness about mental health issues can change the negative attitudes and behaviors towards individuals with mental illness. And whereas every citizen and community can make a difference in helping end the silence and the stigma that has far too long been surrounded by mental illness and discourages people from getting the help that they need. And whereas addressing the mental health needs of children, youth, and families today is fundamental to the future of our community. And whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizens can share the mental illness and have responsibility to promote mental wellness and support preventive measures. And whereas the city of Freeport is fortunate to have the Davis Mental Health Group available for assistance. Now therefore, I Jody Miller, Mayor of the City of Freeport, by the authority vested in me, do hereby declare May as Mental Health Awareness Month in the City of Freeport." And the second one, "Whereas safety is the highest priority of the highways and streets in our city and state. And whereas the state of Illinois is proud to be a national leader in motorcycle safety, education, and awareness. And whereas motorcycles are a common and economic means of transportation that reduces fuel consumption and road wear and contributes in a significant way to the relief of traffic and parking congestions. And whereas it is especially meaningful that the citizens of our city and state are aware of motorcycles on the roads and recognize the importance of motorcycle safety. And whereas the members of ABATE of Illinois Incorporated, a brotherhood aimed towards education, continually promote motorcycle safety, education, and awareness in high school driving education programs and to the general public in our state and city. Presenting motorcycle awareness programs to over 100,000 participants in Illinois over the past five years. And whereas all motorcyclists should join ABATE of Illinois Incorporated in actively promoting the safe operation of motorcycles as well as promoting motorcycle safety, education, awareness, and respect of the citizens of our city and state. And whereas the motorcyclists of Illinois have contributed extensive volunteerism and money to national and community charitable organizations. And whereas during the month of May, all roadway users should unite in the safe sharing of roadways within the city of Freeport and throughout the state of Illinois in recognition of 34 years of ABATE of Illinois Incorporated and over 615,000 registered motorcyclists statewide. In recognition of the continued role Illinois serves as a leader in motorcycle safety, education, and awareness. Now therefore, I Jody Miller, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of Freeport in the state of Illinois, do hereby declare May 2020 as Motorcycle Awareness Month in the city of Freeport and urge all motorcyclists to join in the effort to safely improve to improve safety and awareness on our roadways." And last but not least, "Whereas the first National Day of Prayer was proclaimed by the Continental Congress in 1775. And whereas in 1952, the United States Congress approved a joint resolution setting aside a day each year to recognize the importance and value of prayer throughout America. And whereas the National Day of Prayer is a time set aside for Americans to pray and to reflect on the spiritual principles upon which our nation was founded. And whereas this year marks the 69th anniversary of the National Day of Prayer. And whereas this year's theme is "Pray God's Glory Across the Earth", taken from Habakkuk 2:14, which says, "For the earth will be filled with the knowledge of the glory of the Lord as the water covers the sea." And whereas it is appropriate for citizens of Freeport and Stevenson County to join in this year's National Day of Prayer and to call upon the Almighty for guidance and assistance. Now therefore, I Jody Miller, Mayor of the City of Freeport, do hereby declare May 7, 2020, the National Day of Prayer in the city of Freeport, Illinois. Furthermore, I extend my greetings and well wishes to all observing this National Day of Prayer and invite the citizens of our city to join in seeking the guidance and the direction of Almighty God in the affairs of our city and our individual lives." Next, we have one appointment. Madam Clerk, could you please read this for the record?
Acceptance of reappointment of Benjamin Bushman to the Building Commission effective until April 30, 2024.
Any discussion, counsel? Is there a motion for accepting this appointment?
So moved.
We have a motion made by Alderman Ross, seconded by Alderman Mysick. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Mysick.
Aye.
Berberay.
Aye.
Bornhamon.
Aye.
And McLanathan.
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Item number eight is the Recognition of Service Award. Chief Liggett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to recognize Tom Monkowski. Tom isn't with us this evening, obviously, because of COVID-19, but nonetheless, I'd like to recognize him as a senior member of the department. He started May 29, 1995. He was promoted to lieutenant May 7, 2018. He is the senior lieutenant on B shift. He's a bachelor's degree from Western Illinois University. He's a fire officer two certified, his wife Penny, and had three children here in Freeport. So we just want to thank Tom for all of his hard work and dedication to the department and his contributions throughout his years of service. Thank you, Tom, and if you're listening, job well done.
Thank you, we agree. Item number nine is the second reading of Ordinance 202025. Could you please read this?
An ordinance adopting the official zoning map of the city of Freeport.
Thank you. Director Zupkov.
Thank you, Your Honor. Really not much to add for the second reading. Just an ILCS requirement for municipality to have an updated published zoning map. Ours online is updated through all the zoning changes we've had. None in 2020 so far, so it's current as of December 31, 2019. So that's available at cityoffreeport.org. If anyone ever did not have access to them, they'd be able to come to City Hall or call our department, and we would be able to assist in getting them a copy or getting them any zoning information they might need. Thank you.
Discussion, counsel? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll on the passage of Ordinance 202025?
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Mysick.
Aye.
Berberay.
Aye.
Bornhamon.
Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
The ordinance passes eight to zero.
Item number 10 is the first reading of Ordinance 202027. Could you please read this?
Ordinance regarding no parking in alley between police station, I'm sorry, behind police station between Cherry and Walnut, Wayne, and Coates Streets.
Director Carr.
In his absence, Your Honor, I'll be going to give a presentation. Give you a little background, the parking ordinance currently has no restrictions for parking on either side of Coates Street, Wayne Street, or the alley behind the rear of the police department. Coates Street and Wayne Street are very narrow, and currently if a vehicle parks on both sides of the street, a garbage truck or plow truck cannot get through there. We recently had issues on Coates Street with a vehicle parking there, and the refuse truck could not get back to get the last few homes. We have the same issue with Wayne Street that between the narrow street, if people are parking on it, we could not get a fire truck through there. Also, with regards to the police department, the alley behind the police department, there's an apartment building, and at times, there's cars that park at the apartment building that they kind of jut out a little bit. Although our police cars can get through there, there's times when a refuse truck or an ambulance cannot get through there. So staff's requesting that council approve or move forward the no parking restrictions on Coates Street and Wayne Street and also behind the police department's building.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Brashaw.
Thank you. I have a question, and this is regarding who is doing the parking in those positions? Are they residents in a residential area? And if so, do they have other adequate parking areas to park their vehicles?
There are residents that are parking there.
Madam Mayor.
Is it Busker?
Yes.
Go ahead, Alderman Busker.
I can answer that question, yes, Sally. On Coates Street, there is residents there that they park on the street, but they do, all the residences there have driveways that they can park in. So it's just a matter of changing a habit. So with that said, I'd like to make a motion to move this forward.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion made by Alderman Busker, seconded by Alderman Brashaw. Is there any further discussion, counsel?
Well, Mayor.
Alderman Bornhamon.
Bornhamon, yeah. This is a little off topic, but since it was brought up, when a garbage truck can't get to a certain area, their response is to just continue on with their route and not pick up that trash?
No, when they can't get through, usually their residents will call us, and we'll call the refuse hauler, and most of the time, they'll walk down the road if they have to get the totes to bring them back if they can't get through.
All right, thanks.
Seeing none of the comment, we have a motion made by Busker, seconded by Brashaw, to move Ordinance 202027 onto the next regularly scheduled meeting. Item number 11 is the first reading of Ordinance 202028. Could you please read this?
Ordinance authorizing extension of certain emergency powers in response to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you, Manager Bukas.
Thank you, Your Honor. As most people are aware, the governor has extended his stay-at-home order until May 30 of 2020. What we're proposing at this time is to declare an emergency, excuse me, declare a disaster and emergency declaration till June 1 of 2020 to coincide with the governor's declaration as well. The reason we're doing this is there may be possibilities that grant monies may become available, and if they are, we want to make sure that we had a declared emergency during that time period.
So basically, it's no different than the first one that was declared?
That's correct, Your Honor.
Any questions, counsel?
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Brashaw.
Thank you, I'd like to make a motion to move this forward.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion made by Alderman Brashaw, seconded by Alderman Bornhamon, to move Ordinance 202028 onto the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Your Honor.
Manager Bukas.
I'd like to ask council to consider an emergency suspension of rules since this is an emergency declaration.
I'll make the motion to suspend the rules, Madam Mayor.
Seconding.
Okay, we have a motion made by Alderman Brashaw, seconded by Alderman Ross, for suspension of the rules. Suspension of the rules is non-debatable and must pass by a two-thirds majority. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll on the suspension of the rules only?
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Mysick.
Aye.
Berberay.
Aye.
Bornhamon.
Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
The motion passes eight to zero.
So now, before you, counsel, is the final passage of Ordinance 202028. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll on the final passage of this ordinance?
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Mysick.
Aye.
Berberay.
Aye.
Bornhamon.
Aye.
And McLanathan.
Aye.
The ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Item number 12 is the adoption of Resolution 202027. Could you please read this?
Resolution appointing Andrew Zupkov to the Board of Trustees of the Northern Land Bank Authority.
Manager Bukas.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a member of the Northern Illinois Land Bank Authority, and we do have a board seat on there, and it's my recommendation that we point Andrew to fill the city's representation on that board. He's been involved with the land bank since the beginning, and he's working with property owners when we purchase property that may be reusable or resellable. So it's my recommendation that Andrew fill that position.
I make a motion for approval.
Okay, we have a motion made by Alderman Parker for the approval of this resolution.
Seconding.
And a second by Alderman Mysick. Counsel, is there any discussion on this? Then there is a motion made by Alderman Parker, seconded by Alderman Mysick, for the adoption of Resolution 202027. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Mysick.
Aye.
Berberay.
Aye.
Bornhamon.
Aye.
And McLanathan.
Aye.
The resolution is adopted, eight to zero.
Item number 13 is the adoption of Resolution 202028. Could you please read this?
Resolution approving amended intergovernmental agreement with next generation 911 services.
Thank you. Chief Summers.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is an agreement that we need to have in place. It's in agreement with the Stevenson County Sheriff's Department, where each one of us would act as a backup to our 911 centers. This is important. Next generation 911 requires this agreement for us to have a backup access point, public safety access point, which the county has one, and we're one. And in that agreement, we act as the backup for each other. This agreement allows us to move forward with the project. We're in with numerous other counties that have approved a similar agreement, and we need to have this agreement in place so we can also join those groups that are beginning the next generation 911 system in our area.
Alderman Parker?
Make the motion to approve that resolution. Seconding.
We have a motion made by Alderman Parker, seconded by Alderman Ross, to adopt Resolution 202028. Is there any further discussion, counsel?
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Mysick.
So.
Madam Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so in reading through this, it appears that this is this is an agreement that does not have any it does not have any special weight given to one versus the other. It's a mutual agreement, and it looks as though the time period of this is a five-year, and it requires 12 months to change or terminate. Now, so when going through this, is this similar to what has been in place in the past?
This is exactly what's been in place in the past for over 25 years. We've always been each other's backups as the 911 system was implemented. If we're busy or all of our lines are busy, the sheriff's department will handle those calls. And when the sheriff's department's busy, they'll automatically roll over to the police department, and we handle their calls.
Follow-up? Is there any, in the past, and I guess also going into the future, is there ever any exchange of funds for the services provided?
The 911, Stevenson County 911, does provide both the city and the county funds for the operation of the 911 system.
Thank you.
Was there another Alderman that had a question?
Not anymore, thank you.
Okay, then, Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll on the adoption of Resolution 202028?
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Mysick.
Aye.
Berberay.
Aye.
Bornhamon.
Aye.
And McLanathan.
Aye.
The resolution is adopted, eight to zero.
Item number 14 is approval of the bid for the bid opening that was March 10, 2020. Chief Summers.
Thank you, Your Honor. We originally went out for bids to replace three squad cars, but as the changing times came along and the financial situation, we backed off on those cars. It's recently been brought to my attention that our 2014 Dodge Ram, it's our shift commander's vehicle, has 154,000 miles on it. The engine in that vehicle's been replaced twice, and we're starting to see some of those same problems that we had when the engines were replaced. When we went out for bids, we received two local bids for a vehicle that would fit the specifications that we requested. There was also a bid
Uh, there was also a bid from, uh, Marl Brothers Ford, uh, and they are the holders of the state bid for, uh, Ford vehicles. The, uh, bid that they, uh, gave us was $22,880 and with their trade-ins, um, I'm sorry, the bid that they had given us was $31,880, but with the trade-ins, um, of the vehicles that we're gonna trade in, they came in the lowest at $22,880. The other thing that's, um, that makes this vehicle, uh, attractive to us is that it's sitting on their lot, lot right now, uh, ready for, uh, delivery, um, as opposed to, uh, one that was gonna be, that was similar in, in price, but it was gonna take 32 weeks for delivery.
Madam Mayor?
Alderman Ross?
Uh, Chief Summers? Uh, the Ford that you're speaking about, uh, does, will it come with a warranty?
Yes, uh, it, it would have the standard warranty that's on the, uh, on the vehicle.
Whatever warranty, that's still...
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
And, uh, follow-up, Mayor?
Yes.
And, uh... Okay. All right, how about that? The, uh, the warranty and, uh, how many miles is on this vehicle?
The vehicle that's there?
The, the Ford?
It's, it's brand-new, it's on the lot.
Oh, okay.
Um, and the warranty's three years, $36,000 bumper-to-bumper and a five-year, uh, $60,000 roadside assistance.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Brasshaw?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, my question is this for the listening audience. Has this been budgeted for already this year?
Yes, uh, money was set aside, uh, for this, uh, for purchase of, uh, police department vehicles.
Thank you, Chief. Um, if it, if no one else has any questions, I'd make a motion to approve the bid for the Ford F-150 from Marl Brothers Ford at $22,880.
Yes, yes, it is.
The F-150, yeah.
Yes, the F-150.
I'll second that. I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion made by Alderman Brasshaw, seconded by Alderman Parker for the approval of the bid as stated. Is there any further discussion, counsel?
Madam Mayor?
Alderman Mysick?
Just a, a clarification. Thank you for describing the, the situation with, uh, the 2014 Dodge Ram. Is that currently still in service with the, the issue or has it already been taken out of service?
It's currently still in, in service, um, today.
So, is there a need to take immediate action to avoid a, a breakdown?
Uh, I, I would prefer to take action. So, if we do, there's still value in the truck now as it, as it's running. I, I'd hate to lose that value that we have in it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Uh, Mayor, this is Borneman.
Yes, Alderman Borneman.
Thank you, Chief Summers. I've had, uh, heard people ask the question of what's the need to have a pickup truck versus getting something that may be, uh, I guess more affordable, uh, for the, the shift sergeant? What's, uh, what's the reasoning behind having a, a truck?
We, uh, carry all different, um, tools that go outside the regular squad cars, um, uh, for the protection of the officers that are out there on the street. There's, uh, shields, uh, that are in that vehicle, other, other tools that we may need that are out there that's just impossible to carry inside a, a regular sedan squad car. Um, then, then, having the truck also allows us to navigate things, uh, a little easier in the winter and, and sometimes in the flooding when we need to get over there where they, the, uh, the sedans are just too low to the ground that it pays to have a utility vehicle and a truck like that that can get us to those areas.
Thanks.
Alderman Parker?
Madam Mayor?
Madam Mayor, this is...
Uh, we'll start with Alderman Parker.
Okay, if there's a hurry and they have it on their lot, we approve it tonight, how soon can you go get it?
We could probably get it as soon as, uh, we can get a check and, and head down that way.
Okay, Mr. Backus.
Well, we'll kind of check from tomorrow.
Perfect, 'cause you want to do it before we lose value and it's been approved, they have it in the lot, let's go get it. Thank you.
Alderman Brasshaw?
Madam Mayor, I pass on my question, it's been answered.
Okay, and was that Alderman McLanathan?
Yes. What fund is this coming out of?
I believe it's coming out of the capital fund.
Correct. We had budgeted three vehicles at this time, but, uh, because of what's happening, uh, we're not seeing the revenues coming in and I don't anticipate seeing revenues coming in, so I talked to the chief about this and we're only gonna replace one vehicle this year.
Thank you.
If there's no further discussion, Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Ross?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Busker?
Aye.
Brasshaw?
Aye.
Mysick?
Aye.
Berberay?
Aye.
Borneman?
Aye.
McLanathan?
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Item number 15 is the approval of the bid for a bid opening April 22nd for the radio systems components for the fire department. Chief Liggett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, the department, uh, put out requests or proposals in March, uh, March 27th of this year. We had our bid opening April 22nd, uh, and we received three bids. Lowest bidder was Radacom at $228,811.30. The second lowest bidder was Rock River Service at $304,700.34 and the highest bidder was Chicago Communications with, uh, $319,774.34. Each of the bidders' better requirements, uh, the format, submittals, um, the Harris, uh, Radacom provided us with Harris radio products, Rock River Service and Chicago Communications provided us with a Motorola product. I had a employee committee do evaluations and testing of all the radio equipment offered by several different companies, uh, including, um, Kenwood, uh, EF Johnson, Viking, um, Motorola and Harris. The committee came up with a recommendation of selecting Rock River Service, which is the second lowest bidder. Uh, and the reason for that selection is that the Motorola APX 8000, which is, uh, very similar to the radio I have here with me, um, and radio accessories provide a communication capacity to the firefighter that improves safety and enhances, uh, with the enhanced features that are not available in the Harris communication platform. Uh, the Motorola Remote Mic Speaker Microphone, which is very similar to this one, this is not the exact microphone, this is actually the generation before, the one that we're currently going to buy with your approval. Um, this particular microphone has, uh, greater quality in, in order to be able to manipulate the microphone with a gloved hand. Now, if you can imagine, um, this is my current firefighting microphone. And you see the difference? Uh, with a gloved hand, it's much more difficult to manipulate this one with a, with a gloved hand than it is this one. One thing that is going to be different on this radio is that there is a channel, this channel-changing knob will be on the top of the radio. So, with this radio tucked under my coat, I will be able to change the channels without taking my glove off or getting underneath any of my protective clothing. Um, right now, I can't do that. If I have an emergency in the building and I'm trapped and I can't reach my radio, there's no changing a channel. So, if I get off-channel, keying up the mic, there are a lot of things I can't do right now that I can do with this new radio. Those features are not available in the lowest bidder. So, based on those things, um, and, and the other, the tone, the quality, the voice can't, noise-canceling technology that's available and then, uh, the interoperability that this radio provides with state mutual aid channels and our police department, we would like to select this radio for our firefighting radio. In addition to approving the, the, uh, uh, Rock River, um, bid, um, the federal government, when they, uh, gave us our award, only allowed us $5,000 per radio. Um, these, these radios, um, as you can see from the bid detail, are $6,887 apiece. So, that leaves us with a funding gap with some of the accessories, uh, of a total of $69,631 of funding gap. So, what I'm asking also is, uh, your further authorization to expend funds from the Fire Improvement Fund to cover that gap. Now, I have, am working on a grant amendment that I believe FEMA will approve and, um, when that, uh, is approved, because all these bids came under what we were allotted by the federal government, um, because these bids are under that, I think that they will be able to allow me to spend those funds, uh, and cover that gap and will still be under budget, um, from the federal award. So, um, but in order to meet the federal grant timelines, I'm asking to approve up to an additional $69,000, um, as detailed in the report, $69,000 and change, $69,631.85, um, in order for me to complete the purchase from the capital funds that we have, uh, already in the budget. Uh, the capital funds that I'm asking to use were previously deter- um, set aside for, uh, the future purchase of a fire engine. Basically, uh, reutilizing these funds for the purchase of the radios will just delay the purchase of the fire engine one year. So, uh, with that, I entertain any questions?
Alderman Parker?
Um, well, I understand being in a situation in a fire and a firefighter's life's a hell of a lot more important than the money, so I make a motion to approve it.
Second it.
We have a motion made by Alderman Parker, seconded by Alderman Ross, uh, for the approval of the bid as stated. Uh, discussion, counsel?
Madam Mayor?
Alderman Mysick?
Madam Mayor?
Sure, I'll, I'll start. So, with the, the request, you, you had given us a, a bit of a history of this in a previous meeting, uh, to, to understand really what the challenge is and so we're required to, to have access to the grant money necessary for the majority of, of this, requires us to, to pay a percentage of that and then the additional 69, or up to $69,000 was to cover what is not funded, um, through the, the available FEMA grant, as I understand. Now, understanding where that additional funding comes from, this would have to take from, uh, from the budget for fire apparatus and so forth. Now, in, in my book, I would see the radios also as being in, in line with fire apparatus. Is there any other key equipment, um, that was, that, that was being planned for, um, that will no longer be available? Um, and understanding here, this was setting it back one year. So, items that would be needed in that year, um, at, at this time, do you have concerns on, on items not being available?
Oh, that, well, uh, I briefed out, uh, uh, City Manager Bukas that I need to talk to you all at our next council meeting, uh, next committee of the whole, um, about our defibrillators. Um, we have, uh, three defibrillators that are expiring. Um, the technology that they currently utilize will no longer be approved by the FDA as of February 3rd of 2021. Our plan, we have them in the out-year budget for the capital program to purchase them in January 1 of 2021. The manufacturing, uh, folks are letting us know that if we do that, we're not gonna have our units in time, uh, to meet the February 3rd deadline. So, um, I will be coming back with a proposal to purchase three defibrillators to replace those later, or early in the fall so that we would be able to meet those, uh, replacement deadlines. And, uh, I, I don't have a cost off the top of my head, but I'm, I'm... I don't have a cost off the top of my head right now, so I don't want to guess. But there, there is funding available in the capital improvement program for that project also.
Okay. So, Madam Mayor, just one, one follow-up. So, the specifically, any, anything that would be coming from this fund for the apparatus is, uh, was, there wasn't anything that was desperately needed at this time? So, there are other funding sources for other key items, as we're understanding at, at this time?
We have, uh, line items in the fire improvement budget for turnout gear, for hose, for the maintenance of our tornado sirens, um, for fire department equipment that we need. If it was a generator or hand tool, things like that are available there. And then we also have funding that's available through the, um, uh, foreign fire fund that we utilize for hand tools and equipment that way, too. So, right now, there are, are not any other critical needs.
Thank you, Chief.
Alderman Busker, was that you asking? Is it, is that Busker?
Madam Mayor?
McLanathan?
No, it's McLanathan.
Alderman McLanathan?
Thank you. Uh, the primary... The source of funding for this, um, is from ambulance fees, is that correct?
Yes.
Follow-up?
Go ahead, Alderman McLanathan.
Follow-up, Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Are we seeing, all right, how's our volume, uh, going? Are we seeing any reductions in this or is it pretty stable, um, in regards to this source of revenue?
We received, uh, a revenue report from our billing company with projections of how we're gonna do this year. Conservative, um, estimates, uh, is a reduction of about 10% to 15% of our revenue over the year. We have a, uh, um, we saw in the beginning of the, uh, stay-at-home order a pretty dramatic reduction in calls for service, but that's now began to tick back up to normal, uh, call volumes every day. Uh, we're also anticipating, uh, something that, uh, City Manager Bukas and I will be bringing back is, uh, for consideration for next year is the GEMT revenue, which is a ground emergency medical transport revenue. It's a revenue source that, uh, will help fund, uh, critical services in Freeport moving forward and there's additional revenue out there for us because we have a high volume of Medicare and Medicaid patients. We'll be seeking that.
Follow-up, Madam Mayor?
Go ahead, Alderman McLanathan.
Thank you. Uh, that source of funding, though, um, I think the application is what, in, in the fall, October, something of that nature, um, but it's not, um, restricted in the manner that the Fire Improvement Fund is currently restricted with a, a ratio of what goes to the general fund versus what goes to the, um, improvement fund for the capital purposes. Is that correct?
Correct, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Alderman Busker?
Yes, uh, Chief Liggett, are these new radios compatible with the, uh, with the MSA air packs to, uh, have, uh, better, uh, better transmitting? Um, I know I used the, had the opportunity to use the, uh, system that we're current, that you're currently on last Thursday and listening to that, uh, radio traffic when we were up in the basket, it was really hard to hear anyone on the ground. So, I didn't know if these radios will be able to, uh, fix that problem.
Um, all of the vendors have Bluetooth capacity, so, uh, it hooks directly into our breathing apparatus and there is a microphone inside the facepiece that will pick up that, uh, transmission.
Excellent, thank you.
Uh, the other thing, too, one of the things that you experienced, uh, being in the tower ladder, that, uh, uh, all that external noise, the pump, uh, water flowing, um, the noise of saws and things like that, um, uh, all interfere with the technology of the current radio we have. The new radio that we will be utilizing has noise-canceling technology. There are several microphones on here. There's three right on the front, and there's two on the back. So what happens is it picks up that extraneous noise, and then the digital radio itself, the computer in the radio cancels out all the unnecessary noise and only picks up the voice and amplifies it.
Thank you.
One of the, I can, I can reflect on one of the tests that we did. We operated a chainsaw, a circular saw, and two fans, positive pressure fans, speaking into the microphone, and we could talk to each other from my office out on the apparatus where all the equipment was running, and you could hear me just like I am right now.
Any other questions, counsel?
Mayor, this is Bornerman.
Alderman Bornerman?
Just so I can understand this correctly, you're asking for counsel to approve potentially up to sixty-nine thousand dollars coming from the fire improvement fund?
There is thirty-four currently budgeted in the fire improvement fund for the match, thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and some change from the match. And then we're going to reutilize money that was set aside for the fire engine from the fire improvement fund for this project also. So there would be a total of both of those.
Okay. And then a follow-up question for Manager Bukas?
Yes.
Manager, the fire improvement fund, that can only be applied to certain things. One of them wouldn't be personnel costs, like salaries, right?
The fire improvement fund's been set up by the city council, and they can, by ordinance, determine how that money is spent. In the past, it's been spent basically on fire equipment and their needs. And then we have forty percent going to the general fund.
Okay. And then one last question?
Go ahead.
These seem like state-of-the-art things that are, would be good for our men and women on the front lines there. But, Manager, are you concerned that later on down the road, if we are still struggling to receive revenues, that this money that's spent here could be used to basically fill the, to pay the firemen and women? And we would lose that potential and lead to layoffs?
I would not dip into this fund to pay for personnel costs. It was basically set up for the fire department's equipment needs. And like I said, forty percent going to the general fund for general purposes. The amount of money that we're looking at was going to be set aside for a new fire truck that's going to be purchased in the future. And so there shouldn't have an immediate impact on the, on the fire improvement fund at this time.
Okay, thank you.
If there's nothing further, counsel, we have a motion made by Alderman Parker, seconded by Alderman Ross, for the approval of the bid. Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Ross?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Busker?
Aye.
Brashaw?
Aye.
Mysek?
Aye.
Berberay?
Aye.
Bornerman?
Aye.
And McLanathan?
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Item number sixteen is approval of a bid for the asphalt surface paving for Float Street from Galena to Adams. Unless Director Carr is on, I'll hand this over to Manager Bukas.
I do, I apologize.
Well, there you go.
I was trying to contain a child earlier. So the Float Street project last year, we left it without a surface. The intent was to originally pave the surface at the same time. But where it got paved at in the year, we weren't allowed to put down surface course at that time in that season, or else it would have not lasted the way it should. So we put out quotes to the two paving firm here around Freeport, and we got quotes back from both Civil and Martin. Between those two, Martin came in as the low bidder for ninety-two thousand, five hundred and forty dollars. This will include the asphalt, as well as the adjustments to all the water valves and manholes that are out there that were put up to grade last year at the end of the year. That request, the city council approved quote from Martin for ninety-two thousand, five hundred and forty dollars. The funding from this will come out of the road fund money that we acquired last year.
Counsel?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Busker, seconded by Alderman Mysek. Any discussion, counsel? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please take the role for the approval of the bid?
Ross?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Busker?
Aye.
Brashaw?
Aye.
Mysek?
Aye.
Berberay?
Aye.
Bornerman?
Aye.
And McLanathan?
Aye.
The bid is approved, eight to zero.
And item number seventeen is approval of the change order for the quote to perform the regrading on countryside storm detention pond. Director Carr?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So we had put out the request for quotes last year for the original grading of the countryside detention basin. We received one back from Civil and then one back from Fisher. Between the two of these, Civil came in, yeah, Civil came in at thirty-six, little over thirty-six thousand, and Fisher originally came in at a little over eight thousand. That was within the price range that City Manager Crowe could approve. So we approved Fisher to begin. Upon starting the project, they were working on the west end of the detention pond, and they were not, they were unable to find a dry layer that they could actually grade off of. They were a little over eighteen inches deep, and they were still in marshland. It's at that point in time where I met with them on site, we had to figure out a new way forward because we were not going to be able to get that taken care of. So what we came up with was a tile system that would run the length of the detention pond there, which would allow for the normal flows to go through the drainage tile. And then the detention pond itself would only hold water or retain water during storm events. So with that, I asked Fisher to give me a new quote on what that tile system would cost. And their quote for that was twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twelve. So when I was looking at the price of that plus the price of their initial quote, they were still coming in underneath Civil's original quote of thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars. I think I actually said thirty-six earlier, it's thirty-eight-five. Because of that, Fisher still has the low quote. So we're, staff is requesting that counsel approve the change order from Fisher for additional twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars to go on top of the initial eight thousand, three hundred and six dollars. That would come to a new price of thirty-six thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars and ninety-six dollars. This would come from the stormwater fee that we're collecting on the water bills.
Madam Mayor?
Alderman McLanathan?
Thank you. Well, I appreciate this is a longstanding issue that goes back to pretty much when I began as an alderman, that they've been having drainage issues back in that detention pond. And we are kind of midstream right now. I don't know how many of you have been back there, but it's really torn up right now. And you can see all the water issues that are going on to it. So it needs to get resolved, and I'm certainly no professional in this area, but it seems like you guys have crafted an alternative that should resolve all those underlying issues. And also with the coming out of the storm fund, I'm not concerned about the questions that, you know, we often have been having regarding, is this going to be impacting personnel, things of that nature? So I'd be in favor of it, but I'd certainly be open to any, you know, questions from aldermen before. Well, I suppose I'd like a motion to approve, let's see, sorry, motion to approve the change order. I just wanted to give a bit of that history as to how long of it.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman McLanathan, seconded by Alderman Busker. Any further discussion, counsel?
Madam Mayor?
Alderman Mysek?
So thank you, Director Carr, for the explanation on this. And obviously, when encountering the water during that grading, requiring that additional work certainly makes sense. It appears that even the total amount is still roughly two thousand less than what Civil's bid was. So I'm certainly in approval to go forward with this.
If there's no other discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please?
Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yes. Yes, Alderman Bornerman.
Just for Director, the original price was twenty-seven, the original price was eight thousand, three hundred and six dollars, right?
Yes, there was, there was another fifteen hundred that we took out for the GPS unit.
Okay. Civil's original price was nine thousand, eight hundred and six?
Yes.
Right?
No, that was, Fisher's original price was nine thousand, eight hundred and six.
Okay. And Civil's original price for the same project was thirty-eight thousand?
Yes, thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and eighty.
So it seemed like Civil, so Civil's, for the same price, for the same bid, Civil was thirty-eight thousand and Fisher was nine thousand, roughly?
Yes.
And that didn't raise any red flags to Manager Crowe that, why was Civil so much higher to begin with? I know you can't speak for him, but you were involved in this process, right?
Yes, Civil, Civil was going to do some bypass pumping. That was what they were, their prices being driven up by.
Okay, that, the unforeseen issue that Fisher came up with, that wasn't something that Civil anticipated?
Civil was trying to get rid of. They, we would have ended up with the same thing. Civil would have been bypass pumping the whole time.
Okay. What is, what is bypass pumping?
So they would have blocked that covert coming in, or coming into the detention pond. And they would have been pumping it through the detent, like, across the detention pond out there. So they would be blocking the water from getting into the detention pond during the construction.
In your opinion, as an engineer, do you think that would have prevented the issue Fisher ran into?
No. No, there was too much water in the detention pond as it was. The area where we were finding water was coming in the sides, it was coming in the side banks, it was coming in from underground. I mean, there must be some activated springs in that area that, that must have activated in the last few years.
Okay. And at this point, it's too late to have Civil put a bid in on the work because Fisher is already mid-project?
Yes.
Okay. Well, thanks for answering my question.
If there's nothing else? Madam Clerk, would you please take the role in the approval?
Ross?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Busker?
Aye.
Brashaw?
Aye.
Mysek?
Aye.
Berberay?
Aye.
Bornerman?
Aye.
McLanathan?
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Item number eighteen is the approval of the agreement for Fairgram Agreement to prepare the local limits, the technical evaluation report for the wastewater treatment plant. Manager Bukas?
Thank you, Your Honor. We're working with the United States Environmental Protection Agency regarding some issues that they're finding in the Pecatanica River. They want us to try to help them find where some contaminants are coming from. This study that we're proposing entails a number of samples taken from various businesses inside the city as well as our wastewater treatment plant. The cost to do the sampling and to write the studies is in the neighborhood of, it is two-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. There's a lot of sampling that's going to be taking place, and hopefully, we can determine where some of these pollutants are coming from. If we can't, then the U.S. EPA will start looking at the township and properties along the township to see if they could find where the pollutants are coming from.
Questions?
Madam Mayor?
Alderman McLanathan?
Thank you. It looks like this is a follow-up from what was discussed at a prior meeting, but what is the source of funding for this two-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand dollars?
We're going to be taking funds out of the wastewater sewer budget, and hopefully, we could pay this over a two fiscal year period.
From what I recall, at our prior meeting, there aren't any, well, while this is basically being mandated on us, there aren't any grants or sources of funding that the federal government or the state is offering to help us with this. Is that correct?
That's correct. There is no outside source of funding for this.
Anything else, counsel?
Mayor, I'm going to jump in, if that's all right?
Alderman Bornerman?
Thanks. Director, Manager Bukas, the, I'm picking on Snack King because they're mentioned as a high contributor to this, if I'm thinking about the, same, yeah. So are the fines, do you believe that the fine current structure for when there's a violation, I guess, are they equal or fair compared to the amount the city has to invest for for these types of studies that are somewhat caused by a place like Snack King, who is one of the higher contributors to the water? If that makes sense?
I believe I understand your question, to be, Snack King and other violators of our wastewater treatment plant limits being fined high enough or large enough to cover some of these costs. Snack King has been a violator of some of our limits in the past and continue to be. Last year, I believe we fined them just over a little over a hundred thousand dollars. And so far this year, we fined them fifty thousand dollars for going over their limits. So part of the funds to pay for this will be coming from fines that are generated from various industries. But Snack King's not the only one that we're looking at. We have, I believe, seven industrial sites, seven industrial users that we're looking at, besides our own wastewater treatment plant and some other businesses.
Thank you. And just a follow-up, Mayor?
Yes.
And I didn't mean to, Snack King came to mind because I, in the memo, it mentioned the hundred and eleven thousand dollars, and that stuck out to me as a pretty high fine. But I guess my question is, do you feel that the fines that we're issuing are proportionate to the amount of pollution or whatever they're adding? And is that something, that fee structure is adequate?
Well, it's not deterring them to fix their ways to then know it's not enough. But they're not the only ones that we're fining, so. Maybe the fines need to be higher, and maybe that might bring them, them, them as in all people that, all the businesses that are exceeding their limits into conformance, or at least bring them into conformance faster.
If there weren't such high contributors of, you mentioned there's at least seven that you have identified, would the city be subject to paying large amounts to have these types of studies done? Or would that, the likelihood of that be reduced if there was less contributors?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear your beginning part of your question.
I guess the reason we're having to do this study in higher Fairgram is directly related to, you mentioned at least seven industrial contributors to the wastewater. related to, uh, you mentioned at least seven industrial, uh, contributors to the wastewater system. Is that fair to say?
The reason we're doing this study is that the United States Environmental Protection Agency has found some contaminants downstream from where our discharge is from the wastewater plant. And they're asking us to look at not only our treatment plant, but at least seven of the industrial users that, uh, that, uh, have waste flow to our treatment plant. And if we find through our study that it's, it's not our treatment plant, or these individuals that are causing the increase in pollutants, then they have to go look someplace else to see where the, where the pollutants are coming from.
Thanks.
If there's no other discussion, is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Mysick, seconded by Alderman Ross. There's no other discussion. Madam Clerk, could you please take the role for the approval?
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Mysick.
Aye.
Burberry.
Aye.
Bornerman.
Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Next, we normally have department head reports. I'm not sure, is it okay that we go ahead and do that, or was there a reason that was left off?
It was probably an accident.
Accident. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't, so, counsel, is it, uh, acceptable to we have department head reports?
Ready. Yes.
All right, then we will start. Yes. We, we will start with, um, interim Director Richter, please.
Uh, I have no report this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you. Director Zupkov?
Nothing to report, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Carr?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, with, uh, the acceptance of the bid on Flow Street, the street department's gonna start milling some of the side roads where we had paved up last year, so that way the, the, the snow plows wouldn't hit the lip there. Uh, so we're gonna take care of that. Uh, the continuous stump removal, and then the peck path is going, uh, I don't wanna say full steam, but it's, uh, moving forward. They finished all the tree clearing and grubbing. Um, they're starting to do some form sewer, covert work on the west end of the project. And then the center line of the path is being staked for both the line and grading. So, it looks like, uh, that project's moving ahead pretty good. We can get some nice dry weather. It'll move a lot, a lot further ahead and a lot faster.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next, Chief Liggett?
Uh, Madam Mayor, the only thing that, uh, we're working on right now is, uh, obviously, the COVID-19 response. Um, we're working on the radio gr, uh, project, and then also, uh, we've been working with the insurance company and the, uh, State Fire Marshal's Office on how we're gonna move forward with the fire investigation. A decision hasn't been made. Um, you gotta take a great deal of resources to, to do the, the fire scene examination at Two Eagles, so, um, we're examining all the options we have in front of us first. All right? That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Chief Summers?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have much, uh, tonight from the police department, just that we're, uh, continuing, uh, monitoring a couple of these addresses that we know that there's, uh, a lot of problems coming from, so we're still keeping our eye on those as well as still trying to do some social distancing on some of the other aspects of, that we have to do. But, uh, still trying to be visible and, uh, provide the enforcement when we need to.
Thank you. Director Kopansky?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. What I'd like to report tonight is that the contractor for drilling a potable well, production well over at the Fields of Freeport, they started last week. They're basically forty-foot on in, and if people drive down, uh, past the Berchard elevated tank, they'll be able to see work, uh, going on. Tomorrow, I have a pre-bid meeting as it relates to the lead service line replacement with the bid opening to take place on May 25th, and look to bring that before counsel at first meeting in June.
Very good, thank you. Director Huffhines?
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to give you an update that tomorrow, we're having a special board meeting to discuss, uh, curbside delivery, and we're also gonna include just kind of our normal board procedures. But it is on a different day of the week and a week earlier, so it's gonna be tomorrow, which is Tuesday, May 5th at 6:00 PM. Um, and, yep, so if anybody has any questions about that, just let me know.
All right, thank you. And Assistant Hines?
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to give an update that as of yesterday, May 3rd, the self-response score in Freeport is 64.7%. Um, the census is still going to be accepting responses until October, either online, by phone, or by mail. Uh, and census, your employees will start doing the non-response follow-up, which is the door-to-door knocking to households that haven't completed the census, starting on August 11th.
Okay, thank you. And Director Setman? Okay, then I believe that takes care of department heads' reports, unless I forgot someone in there. Then we will do city manager report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, just a follow-up to Director Humphries's report. The library board meeting at 6 o'clock tomorrow night will be here at City Hall, uh, in case anybody's interested in attending. As you know, we've been going through some rough times with, uh, uh, this COVID-19 virus. Our revenues are, I am predicting will not be as great as they have been in the past. Starting this month, we'll start seeing how the impact on a, on our local economy will be. And right now, I've instructed all the department heads not to spend any money that's not essential at this time, uh, because we're not sure how our revenues are gonna pan out for the rest of the year. Hopefully, you know, this is the first third of the budget year that we have time to regain what we lost, uh, over the past couple of months. But, as an example, uh, tonight, you know, we had budgeted three squad cars, but we're only buying one. Uh, we've suspended the sidewalk replacement program. Uh, we're not looking, we're not gonna go rent any leases to replace some of our heavy trucks in the public works department for snow plowing, because we're not sure where the, uh, final numbers are gonna come. I'm also looking at this time, Your Honor, to, uh, possible layoffs or furloughs in citywide departments. The police department right now has seven positions that are open that we will not be filling, or not proposing to fill at this time. The fire department has two positions that are not, uh, that are open at this time that we're not filling, and we may look at, uh, you know, form four more in that area. Street department, we have a person that's on leave in the military. Uh, so that's gonna be a savings there. And we also have an opening in the water and sewer department that we're not gonna be filling at this time. The library has two part-time positions open that we're not filling at this time, and there's a possibility of one, uh, library employee's to be retiring, so we're not, we're looking at not filling that. I'm not making any proposals at this time as to who we're gonna lay off, or how, for how long, or if we're gonna do furloughs. But I wanna bring it to your attention that this is something that we have to look at and give serious considerations if the funds, if our revenues don't come back in as we are expecting. And I'm sure many council members have a lot of questions for me.
Well, we appreciate that you are keeping, um, quite the eye on the finances. Uh, questions, counsel? Alderman Parker?
Not really a question, just a statement that, um, it's not easy for you to sit there and say that. And I feel really bad, because as you got my comments earlier, so, good luck.
Well, it's, I hope it's not as true as I'm picturing it right now. Uh, but we'll have to see. Uh, just an example, I know for, for March, you know, our, our room tax, or excuse me, our food and beverage tax money was almost $60,000 less than the year before. So, I mean, we have to look at, at how the revenues are gonna pan out. And I'm looking at our gas tax, our two cents gas tax, that's also down as well. You can just try by the gas stations, and you can see, there's not very many people buying gasoline right now.
Alderman Parker?
Yeah, you're looking at the money, but you also, you are looking at the safety of the public, too, when you're dealing with police and fire, you know, and with the calls and stuff that are going up. So, you've got a two-edged sword there. It's very tough.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Alderman McLanathan?
Uh, thank you. Uh, Manager Bukas, uh, before all this started, um, what was our total employee number?
I believe it's 189.
189, okay, so.
189, full-time.
And you listed up, and you listed about 14 or so positions that are either on leave or open right now. So, it's about seven, seven and a half percent of our, uh, of our workforce, give or take, that you, that we're putting on hold for now?
Yes.
Uh, could you, as we go forward on this, and we're getting some of these, um, actual real-time figures in, could you continue to provide us with, um, like, the real actual dollars and cents, whether it's on a, I don't know, weekly, by, or every other week, or monthly basis even, um, just so we can continue to make as informed of a decision as we go forward and get into budget season here?
Y- yes, uh, I always plan on doing that. Uh, some of our revenues we get in more frequently than others, but most of our revenues we get in once a month. And especially our state revenues that they, from taxes they collect for us, we usually get around the second week of, of the month. So, right now, we're not really seeing anything of them with our local taxes. Uh, so probably, you know, the second council meeting, we may have some numbers for you. Uh, I should say that the May, uh, 19th council meeting, we should have some numbers for you, that we can start looking at. But we're already looking at a comparison. Uh, I'm trying to look at the, the recession of 2007, 2008, and see how revenues dropped there and how long, and how they did in 2009. So, I wanted to kinda do the same comparison, see what kinda drop we had, and see if we're, we're mimicking it, or whether we're in better shape this year than we were back in 2000, 2008.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Manager? Then, uh, as for myself, I'll just keep it short. Just, um, we are doing our absolute best trying to keep our citizens informed to the most relevant information. However, we can start a meeting, and by the time it's done, we have something that's changed. So, it, things are just happening so quickly. So, um, if you check our Facebook page, we're trying to keep that relevant, as well as our website, but you're always welcome to call City Hall if you have any questions. So, just remember the safe practices that are out there of washing your hands, keeping your six-foot distance. Where you cannot keep that distance, please wear a mask, avoid touching your face, and monitor your own health. Remain home if you don't feel well, if you have a temperature, or if you have a persistent cough. So, with that, Alderman Ross?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Alderman Parker?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Alderman Busker?
Nothing this evening.
Alderman Brashaw?
Nothing this evening, Madam Mayor.
Alderman Mysick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I'd like to really give a, a thank you to the city leaders in response to COVID-19, um, particularly Chief Summers, Chief Liggett. Um, a lot of unique challenges we're in right now, and, and I really appreciate the, the leadership in how to manage that. Um, and especially Mayor Miller, interim Manager Bukas, the, uh, some of, when the public doesn't understand and comes in to, just to seek understanding, it appears that there's no clear solution. Making a decision one direction harms people in one way, and then the, uh, the other directions harms people the other way. So, it's, it's very unclear. It's impossible to meet everyone's demand. But I appreciate your leadership to, to stand for the citizens of Freeport and have their best interests in mind. And I think keeping the, the public informed, um, some of the videos that have gone out help to understand what are the facts. So, I really appreciate taking that time to do that, and, and really just to, um, to make a decision and stand behind that decision. So, I, I just very much appreciate and respect that. And I'm also gonna echo some comments from before, is, is just to the general public. Uh, continue to be kind, be positive, uh, be a good steward of the resources that you have. Um, stay connected with those around you, even though you may not be meeting with them physically, but, um, pick up the phone and encourage one another. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Burberry?
I wanted to thank you, Mayor, for handing out masks, which we did.
My pleasure, thank you. Alderman Bornerman? Alderman Bornerman?
Uh, I was on mute. I have a couple of things. Uh, first off, don't forget, Mother's Day is May 10th, and, uh, I know the stay-at-home order has been difficult on everyone, um, but it's probably been especially difficult on those in nursing homes and assisted living facilities. A lot of people have been confined to their rooms, even for their meals, uh, haven't been able to receive visits from friends, um, loved ones and family. So, uh, be sure, if you wanna, I think a gift this, this Mother's Day may be even more meaningful than ever before. So, uh, if you wanna make sure how to deliver a flower, a gift, or a card to a loved one, give your, whoever they're at a call, to figure out how to do it, and make sure you don't forget to do that. Um, also, I'd like to s, thank the Sewing for the State Line, Stevenson County Health Department, county board member Casey Anthony and her husband Miles Anthony, um, they all arranged to, uh, hand out masks this weekend throughout Stevenson County. Uh, the masks were put together, they're reusable masks, put together by volunteers throughout the community, and, uh, Hooker Harness was one company that helped out. The sanitary cleaners, uh, cleaned all the masks, so they were, uh, sterilized before they were handed out. Um, and like I said, they handed out hundreds of masks throughout the Stevenson County, so I really appreciate them taking the time and effort to do some good, and, uh, that's all I have.
Thank you. Alderman McLanathan?
Thank you. I'd just like to thank you all for your, uh, various efforts, uh, both from the city level, um, and, and all, there's, there's so many people out there and organizations. Uh, you're seeing, uh, folks really rally around, um, you know, FACC with some of the food drives that they put together in regards to that recently. Alderman Bornerman mentioned some things, Alderman Mysick mentioned some things, uh, or Alderman Burberry in regards to also the mayor getting involved in, in handing out masks. Um, I just encourage us to, uh, find ways that we can continue to help each other, uh, throughout this period of time. Um, and, uh, I thank you, uh, interim Manager Bukas, uh, for your, uh, continued updates. Regarding our current revenue and also our current expenses, um, I imagine it's going to be, get tougher, uh, before it gets better in regards to this, but, um, with everyone having an emphasis on, um, doing their part, uh, obviously, we'll, we'll get through this. Um, they've gotten through very tough times in the past, and, um, this is our, our situation that we're facing right now. So, uh, thank you for your continued efforts. Uh, they are appreciated.
Thank you. That leaves us with item number 22, public comments. Are there any public comments?
Um, I think it would ring.
Is it on, darling?
Yes. It will ring if it's off.
Okay, it doesn't look like there's any public comments, so I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
We have a motion made by Alderman Ross, seconded by Alderman Parker. Madam Clerk, could you please take the role?
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Mysick.
Aye.
Burberry.
Aye.
Bornerman.
Aye.
And McLanathan.
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Have a good evening and be safe. Thank you. Have a good evening and be safe.